... It stands, "Nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
We will move to the roll call for Secretary with lead us.
Yes, sir. Mr. Alt. Mr. Beistel.
Here.
Mr. Benz.
Here.
Dr. Feig.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman.
Here.
Mrs. Love.
Here.
Mr. Polikowski.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mrs. Rhodes telephoned me earlier today and indicated that she would be unable to attend this evening.
Thank you. And Mr. Miller.
Here.
We have seven present.
Thank you very much and two absent and we will move to citizen comments.
We have no comment cards this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask you a question. Is our last meeting where the television?
No. It was not.
Why?
Because our videographer was not at the last meeting. Mr. Pollak was not at the last meeting.
So he was not here?
That's correct. I actually announced that. You might have gone already, but I mentioned that at the end of the meeting. I believe there was a calendar mix up.
Thank you.
Mr. Bellis. Sure. I have a comment to make. I just wonder if this is a time and a place. I happened to be introduced to a parent that moved their child into our school district and we had a good conversation. And the reason that they came to Southmoreland, they went and got on the Internet and researched the school districts in this area. And they picked Southmoreland because of the high education level and everything that's going on with the schools. So I just wanted to let you know that there are people out here recognizing what our school districts is doing.
Thank you, Mr. Beistel. Hey, we will move to minutes and approval of minutes of June 27 and July 18.
It is recommended that the Board approve the minutes of the June 27 and July 18, 2013 meetings and those are corrected to reflect the 8-1 vote regarding the resignation of the head varsity track.
Your motion?
Make a motion.
Ms. Kaufman makes the motion and a second by Ms. Love. All in favor? Just a minute. Any comment or discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it and the minutes are approved and we move to business and finance and fund accounts.
It is recommended that the Board approve the July 2013 revenue report, expenditure report, bills payable and accounts payable and the July 2013 treasures report.
So be it.
Mr. Beistel makes the motion. Second by Mr. Polikowski. Comments? Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Benz.
Yes.
Dr. Feig.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Polikowski.
Yes.
And Mr. Miller.
Yes, and that passes seven, zero and two. Let us move. Old business?
I have a question. It's appropriate. I don't know how the agenda goes, but I'd like to talk about some of the old business.
Well, what is the nature of it, Ms. Feig? Go ahead.
It has to do with the health care that was amended for the previous superintendent's contract. And I guess Mr. Potomac wrote this. And I not only don't understand it, but I'm wondering who is in charge of calculating this at the end of the eighth year after he retires in terms of reimbursement? Eight years is a long time. My days, I'm sure, are numbered here, but it says here that they're going to calculate this thing, which is an amazing piece of writing here. This shall be calculated at the end of the eighth year after retirement with actual costs or look back and the superintendent will reimburse the difference in 90 days. Can you explain to me who is in charge of doing this eight years after this contract, Mr. Reddick?
That would come under the auspices of the Business Office and the individual that works with benefits.
Did you know about this, Mr. Reddick?
I'm new here, so I'm not familiar with what will have to be done in that eighth year. May I have a copy of that?
We can get you a copy.
It's a bizarre kind of thing and I remember when I voted for it, somebody said, "Go ahead and vote for it, Catherine. Eight years from now, nobody will even know it exists." And I remembered that. And I've been thinking about that because it goes up to 2018. And it's a bizarre thing about changing things and calculating. And I just wonder if the Affordable Care Act comes in and I don't know what that's going to cost, but apparently this individual gets eight years of free health care at any price, one I can gather. But it had something to do with reducing his sick day benefits from $70 to $50 a day. And this was the thing that puzzled me the most. When he retired, he was off an entire year with sick days, so there couldn't be any left. Couldn't be.
Okay.
I just want it on the record that I am expressing concern that someone, eight years after this document was written, will do whatever it says. It's really difficult to understand. There are four of us on this board now who did this.
All right, thanks.
That's old business.
Thanks. And if you have further questions on it, check with Mr. Marnell there and he'll help you out. New business?
Making notes here. PARIS Renewal, there was some discussion on this last week and I'm not sure we came to a consensus, so I worded the motion, "It is recommended that the Board consider the renewal of its membership in the Pennsylvania Association of Rural and Small Schools for the 2013-14 school year at a cost of $940." So the individual making the motion would either make a motion to renew or not to renew.
Or no motion at all means it dies.
No motion at all means it dies and will take no action.
What benefits do we get out of it?
From what I can tell, PARIS is a lobbying group that represents rural and small schools in the legislature in Harrisburg. I don't know what their success rate is. I don't know what their sphere of influence is because when legislation passes, it may or may not pass because of them or in spite of them or maybe they have leverage, maybe they don't. I don't know. I just don't know enough, you know, about the workings of lobbyists in Harrisburg to be able to even make a recommendation in terms of their effectiveness.
If we don't get the benefit hours, there's no sense in spending our money for it, is the way I feel.
Look at anything else.
Why don't we do this just procedurally? Would you want to make a motion to that effect?
That we don't accept it?
That we do not.
Can I?
And then we'll vote on it. Then we'll get it on the table. That...
Well, I may have a motion to table it depending on what the answer is.
Okay, all right.
Is there a reason?
Let's get a motion up.
Yeah, procedurally, that would be better. Let's honor that.
I make the motion and we don't accept it.
I second.
And that's second that the motion is bade by Mr. Beistel not to renew. The second is by Ms. Feig. Okay, now, let's have more. We discussed it some last week. Let's go ahead, Mr. Benz.
Does it need to be done this week? And my follow-up would be to that is, could we talk to our local representatives and senators to see what kind of work they are doing in Harrisburg?
I don't believe there's a due date on the bill.
So could we table it and maybe talk to our local representatives and senators and see?
Who are you going to talk to, Mike? Tell me who you're going to talk to. I do this all the time. Tell me who you're going to talk to.
Representatives Harhay?
He's not your representative. Well, yeah, part of it is. Yeah, part of it.
Okay. Give Mr. Benz a chance to respond. Go ahead.
I mean, we can see if they have any input to, you know, if they are, think that they're reliable to someone that's feeling good for the smaller school districts in the rural district.
My way I feel about that is, it would already be out and they should be doing so much for the school district, we shouldn't even have to go and ask questions about if it's a good program to get into. That's my opinion. So, you know.
With the new program, that's about a number.
Number of years, yes. And we occasionally get an update that they've lobbied this and they've, you know, tried to influence that. One of those kinds of things.
So if they know tonight, we can always get back in next year if we think you made a mistake or... They'll take you back tomorrow, Jess.
They don't just lobby for our district though, right? It's all small.
No, it's the Pennsylvania Association of Rural and Small Schools, so it's schools that are demographically similar to us across the state.
There's interesting, our attorney here mentioned what created this. They sued the state, didn't they, on behalf of equitable funding?
Yes.
And we lost that case.
Mr. Marnell, you've been around the school districts, different ones. Have you got any experience with these people?
I think I mentioned in our last meeting, at Ligonier Valley, we did not join when it initially got started. Over the years, no one on the Board expressed interest to join it, so we never did. I think like any lobbying association, I don't believe this is a group that has bad intentions. I think they have the best intentions. It's a group of districts like ourselves. We're small, we're all fighting for better funding from our state government. It is hard to measure whether they have been successful or not. Had they not existed, maybe things would be worse. Maybe they would be better if we don't doubt. It's like a, you know, it's like a leap of faith.
Do they provide us with information? Do you ever get, like, information, good information from them, that they're starting the communication, where they provide you?
I link letters from them occasionally. You know, it just tells you what they're pushing for. Generally, it's in the area of funding.
I think in one regard, maybe the records have had some benefit. For example, like the previous districts I have worked at, that, like yourselves, have had declining enrollment over the years. We have not suffered in state subsidy. There was, you know, provision in there for the whole harmless, that, you know, you're guaranteed to get the same amount of subsidy that you received the year before. And there's always been some sort of incremental increase. I don't know if they were part of that effort to get that built into the school code or not, but, you know, I said for years, you know, thankfully, that provision was put in so that, you know, as we went through declining enrollment, you know, our state subsidy didn't suffer because of it.
I'm going to catch this one.
The motion is that we do not renew and I'm ready to call the...
Maybe I want to clarify that. It's a yes vote, not...
A yes vote is that we do not renew for this year. Yeah. Okay. Roll call, please.
I think Mr. Benz is up. Mr. Benz.
Yes.
Dr. Feig.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Polikowski.
Yes.
And Mr. Miller.
Yes. Wait, oh, I'm sorry. I was out of my... Might be missing.
See, we put a rookie here. Mr. Beistel.
Yes, I'm a rookie too.
Ah, Mr. Miller.
Yes, and that passes seven, zero and two. Okay, the Pennsylvania Youth Survey.
I was able to obtain a sample of this survey and read over it after discussion among the administration. And based on some of the discussion we had last week, we're recommending that the Board authorize the administration to decline participation in the Pennsylvania Youth Survey.
I'll make that motion.
Feig makes the motion. Second by Mr. Polikowski.
Discussion, questions?
I don't know if you read it or not, but it's, would you give that to your child? It's pretty staggering. Jack, I have a question that's kind of related to this. I was reading the newspaper this morning and it said that Mount Pleasant is having this jail program again. It said Southmoreland is interested. Did you tell them that?
I did not, no.
It's in the paper that Southmoreland was to participate. And this is where they want to bring convicts out from the jail to talk to kids, want the kids to go toward the prison. And in my opinion, I think we should concentrate on academics. I think that's... I was surprised when it said Southmoreland was interested in doing it.
Yeah, I had not expressed interest.
They never talked about it.
Okay.
It's that reality tours I was talking about? I think it's called...
I think that's...
Yeah.
All right, on the youth survey, any other comments? Question?
That's a yes vote, not to do it, right?
That's what the, that's what the recommendation is, right? Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Dr. Feig.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Polikowski.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
And Mr. Benz.
Yes.
And Mr. Miller.
Yes, and that passes seven, zero and two. And we move to advertising for substitute van drivers and school security personnel.
Right now, we're very low on van drivers and school security in terms of people to fill those spots, especially the substitute van drivers. So it's recommended that the Board authorize the administration to advertise in the local newspapers for substitute van drivers and school security personnel.
I'll make that motion.
Feig makes the motion. Second by Ms. Kaufman.
Comments? Questions?
We had a problem before because the salary was so low we couldn't get, keep people. We raised it a little bit.
I think it's up to $10 an hour.
Is that going to get us anywhere?
I don't know.
Remember, they said that was the problem.
Right.
Well, you know what I'm thinking. Go ahead and advertise and see what happens. And if you can't get anybody working, I will have to, but somebody's going to have to deal with that and see what you do about it. Because you've got to have, you've got to have.
Roll call, please. Mrs. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Polikowski.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Benz.
Yes.
Dr. Feig.
Yes.
And Mr. Miller.
Yes, and that passes seven, two, I'm sorry, seven, zero and two. Okay. Resolution, authorizing the solicitor's attendance at the law school workshop.
Whereas registration rates are effective through August 30, 2013, for the annual school law workshop at the PSBA Annual Convention, be it resolved that the solicitor is authorized to attend and the treasurer is directed to pay for the attendance of the solicitor at the solicitor's workshop at the Annual Convention of the Pennsylvania School Boards Association in Hersha, Pennsylvania, on Tuesday and Wednesday, October 15 and 16, 2013, at a registration fee for the school law workshop of $294 and a room rate at $175 plus tax, which is the lodge rate, plus the usual and customary meal and transportation expenses.
By Ms. Kaufman. Second by Mr. Beistel. Comment? Question?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
When the solicitor goes there, do you get credits as required for continuing education?
I do usually, yes. Most of the time. There are some times when I don't need them and they're surplus. And there are other times when they do help towards your fee or key areas of credit. I also, in the situation where, unlike some school districts, I've always paid my own fee of $500 a year to the law, that's like the School Boards Association, unlike other parts of the school district which have the school district pay for that. I front that $500, so before I'm even eligible to go there, I have to pay $500 out of my own pocket, so...
Are you still going there?
Yes, yeah.
You need a good many of those CEAs, don't you? You need a good many of those continuing education years, don't you?
Twelve a year.
And this will get you six.
It does.
It's about half. I didn't know you paid your $500 to the law. I didn't know that. Thank you.
Good. Other questions? Comments? Roll call. Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Polikowski.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Benz.
Yes.
Dr. Feig.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, and that passes seven, zero and two. Let us move to child abuse and report training.
Just a little bit of background on this, because we didn't discuss it at the planning meeting. There was an act recently passed, legislation was recently passed, that school districts have to provide three hours of training on the recognition and reporting of child abuse. And that training has to be provided by a provider that is approved by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. I've been working with the intermediate unit and they are working through a company called Safe Schools. And the way that particular company operates is they have a sliding scale. The more individuals they have under the umbrella of the intermediate unit, the less the cost is per individual that they're training. Additionally, they will track hours. They will let us know when it's time for individuals to have refresher courses and they will train our substitute teachers at no cost. So this is why we're recommending this group. So therefore, it's recommended that the Board authorize the administration to enter into an agreement with Safe Schools Training of Cincinnati, Ohio, to provide mandated, approved child abuse and reporting training. And just in terms of transparency, right now, based on the number of individuals that they will be training, the cost would be somewhere around $5.40 to $5.60 per individual. And the only thing that's holding us up right now is they have their last course in revision. PD had asked them to make a couple of revisions to their program in order that they can get it approved.
Jack, I have a question for the motions made there. Do you do this, like, on an in-service day when you bring everybody in?
Well, that's how the IU had planned to do it. They were actually going to do it yesterday, but then they couldn't because there was this little glitch in their ability to become approved. You can do it that way. It's a three-hour training or it can be broken into modules of one hour each. And we're looking at doing it that way as part of our team learning process because really it's more effective to do things in small groups where there can be some discussion and some discourse and so on, instead of putting, you know, 300 people into an auditorium and having them watch a computer screen for three hours.
But my question, Jack, is you've done this before. We've had training in our schools. I know the nurses go for it all the time and stuff. About child abuse.
We've done it, we've done it ourselves.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, we can't do that anymore.
You can't do that anymore.
No, because we're not approved providers.
You're not good enough.
So recommended for you... I would entertain a motion and then let's discuss it further if it comes to us.
Well, I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Ms. Feig.
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistel. And further questions or comments? Just in lay terms, is it to, what is appropriate for teachers or personnel if they see a child that appears to be abused or appears to have been...
As Tim just mentioned a lot of it, I think there's a reaction to what occurred at Penn State. You know, who is a mandated reporter? What do you need to be reporting? Who's not a mandated reporter? Where does your responsibility end? And what are the signs that you're looking for in terms of, you know, child abuse and what may not constitute, you know, child abuse as well? The law has been in place right now where even if we have a suspicion, we don't investigate, we immediately pick up the phone and make a call. But this is a much more intensive training. The thing I really like about this, it's, instead of having someone actually come in and do the training, we have to schedule over and over and over again. If we get a new employee in two weeks, they can log on and receive the training asynchronously via the Internet.
Will that suffice then for their...
That will suffice, but then after three years, there's a refresher that they have to go through every so many years. And this company will also provide that. They do the tracking, they'll, you know, the whole bit.
One more mandate. Add it to the list.
They will train bus drivers, they will train custodians. Everybody that works with kids has to be trained, you know, from myself down to the custodians, the bus drivers, everyone.
Does that include people with supplementals like coaches and band?
I want those people to be trained, yes.
Jack, will you call subs to come in for training or will they do it online?
Well, it'll be done online no matter where it happens. I'm guessing we'll have them come in, but that decision has me...
We may have to pay them.
Pardon me?
We may have to pay them.
We may, yeah.
Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Polikowski.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Benz.
Yes.
Dr. Feig.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, and that passes seven, zero and two. And I'm at the point here, I think we're in the agenda of taking a recess for personnel and legal. So if I could hear a motion for a executive session.
So be it.
And Mr. Beistel makes the motion and Ms. Kaufman seconds it. All in favor?
I just announced that the legal is the, I'm not supposed to do this, the 220 investment regs, litigation, tax money bureau, their number is 4714000155.
All right, that is on record. And all in favor of going to executive session, say aye.
All right.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it and we move. And I would entertain a motion to reconvene.
So be it.
By Mr. Beistel makes the motion and Ms. Kaufman makes the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. And the ayes have it. And we will move then to personnel. And Dr. Muller here on the school security.
It is recommended that the Board authorize the addition of substitute custodian Douglas Thomas to serve as a member of the school security staff.
The motion.
Make a motion.
And Ms. Love makes the motion.
Second.
Second by Ms. Feig. Roll call.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Benz.
Yes.
Dr. Feig.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Polikowski.
Yes.
And Mr. Miller.
Yes, and that passes seven, zero and two. Kindergarten team leader.
It is recommended that the Board appoint Mrs. Kimberly Albrecht to the supplemental position of kindergarten team leader at a supplemental salary of $1,591.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Benz. And I think I heard Mr. Beistel second, please. Thank you. Second, please. Thank you. And roll call?
Question on the...
Oh, sure, go ahead.
How many teachers would this involve, kindergarten?
Kindergarten, we have eight, I believe, so first, eight kindergarten teachers, right there?
And then the title one teacher is on that team, and one of our itinerants is on that team.
Eight plus a title one and an itinerant teacher, so it would be a total...
Eight plus, eight plus the title.
Eight-person team.
Okay?
Thank you. Other comments? Then, roll call, please?
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, and that passes seven, zero, and two. Assistant varsity soccer coach? Oh, I'm sorry, here. Let's go back here. Moving along here. There we go.
Sorry.
Tenure.
It is recommended that the board grant tenure to Vincent Masha, who has completed three years of satisfactory service as a professional employee of the Southmoreland School District.
So...
Was that you, Ms. Feig?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kaufman? Dr. Muller, maybe just a note on, Mr. Masha is a principal.
Mr. Masha is a, a middle school, middle school principal. And Mr. Masha came to us from the parochial system where tenure is not granted. But he's been in the public school system now for three years with satisfactory service. So it's, we should have really done this when we tenured the rest of our professional employees earlier this year. But with Mr. Masha being a principal and not a teacher, it just kind of slipped our minds.
Okay. Roll call, please? Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
And Mr. Miller?
Yes, and that passes seven, zero, and two. And rooms drivers for 2013-14?
It is recommended that the board approve the list of bus drivers for rooms transit for 2013-14 school year as per the list applied to the school board, and the task to the minutes of this meeting.
So be it.
Mr. Beistel makes the motion? Second by Mr. Polikowski?
Roll call, please? Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, and that passes seven, zero, and two. And the resignation of the assistant varsity soccer coach?
It is recommended that the board accept the resignation of Kurt Olinger as assistant varsity soccer coach, and approve him as a volunteer soccer coach.
Hear a motion? Mr. Polikowski?
Second.
Second by Ms. Feig? And roll call?
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, and that passes seven, zero, and two. Assistant varsity soccer coach?
It is recommended that the board employ Timothy Dunn as an assistant varsity soccer coach at the contract at supplemental rate of $2,733.
Motion?
Motion by Mr. Benz?
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistel? Roll call, please?
Question?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Feig.
How many of those are there? Do you assist them?
Uh, I believe there's a head coach, a first and second assistant at the varsity level. Then there's a middle school, and there may be an assistant middle school. Without looking at the list of supplementals, I don't know for sure.
Okay. Roll call, please? Mr. Polikowski?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, and that passes seven, zero, and two. Volunteer golf coaches?
It is recommended that the board approve Rick Pritz and Courtney Shields as volunteer golf coaches, pending receipt of updated clearances to be placed at the discretion of the head coach.
Hear a motion? Mr. Polikowski? Motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kaufman?
Comments, questions? Roll call? Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, and that passes seven, zero, and two. Student services team leader?
It is recommended that the board appoint Mrs. Andrea Hanford to the supplemental position of student services team leader slash testing coordinator at the contract at supplemental rate of $1,330.
Motion?
Motion is by Ms. Love?
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistel? Question, comments?
It's a sad day when we have to pay somebody more money to do what is already expected of them. It's a sad day.
Okay. Other comments? Roll call, please? Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
No.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
And Mr. Miller?
Yes, and that passes six, one, and two. Additions to the day-to-day substitute list?
It is recommended that the board employ Michael Bashian, Cassandra Bijai, Sandra Cantor, Zachary Bush, and Kimberly Snyder as day-to-day substitute teachers.
Motion is by Ms. Kaufman?
Second.
Second by Mr. Benz? Comments, questions?
Roll call, please? Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, and that passes seven, zero, and two. We will move here to board reports, activities. CWCTC report. That would be the spot.
Okay, we meet, we have not met since June. We had July off, so we meet next Wednesday. But last meeting we were here, there was an update that Dr. Muller passed out. Just to briefly go out, we're gonna start giving us a monthly report of the progress project, of the project summary. And work began just real quick early on Monday, July 22nd. And on Thursday, the 25th, all the asbestos was in progress, so being unscheduled, being removed. And again, he's gonna, I'll find out more next week, so when we come back in September, I'll give you a better update. But we meet on Wednesday, next Wednesday.
Questions for Ms. Kaufman? Thank you. Intermediate unit report, Ms. Feig?
Yes, I have two reports to give. Okay, first of all, the IU had an early August meeting on the 6th. They're in the process of hiring personnel, all of which are replacing people who have, who have been retired, resigned, and so forth. And they took over the Crossroads Program from Pembroke High School. And this is a program for students who are there for serious misbehavior issues. They have been able to scale down even one of the salaries from $95,000 to $50,000. We received a report that are really old. I think it's 12 years now. Dismissal case. It's 11 years. Was actually appealed again by PSCA to the Supreme Court, and it involved serious drug abuse. They also approved their contract with Sourceful Teachers and Mission One, and the agreement for the intermediate, so that they will handle the substitutes for both teachers and other personnel. We have two new board members. They handle all routine business. They started a new thing. All administrative team members will be attending all the board meetings. And that's very nice, because they're there to answer questions. And they also had to hire a number of specialists, speech therapy people like that, to fill vacancies that already exist. The other report I wanted to give you is that, and you don't have to accept this if you don't want to, but on August 5th, I went to Harrisburg, I was in Harrisburg all day. And I attended the House hearing on the Common Core. It was chaired by Clymer, co-chaired by Roebuck. There was no public input. You went in there, just had to sit there. And we all listened to Carolyn do a rest, run her mouth, and I have no regard for her, and I don't have any problem saying it. But anyhow, what came out of this in a big way was the concern that 76% of all students graduate from high school in Pennsylvania. Even those, and that includes those who go to a two-year, non-selective community college, who take everybody, have to go into remedial classes, 76% in math and reading. And this is, this is a real, serious problem as to the quality of what we are getting for the billions of dollars. There was no public input, but on August 29th in Philadelphia, there will be a combined Senate-House hearing. And we were able to, if you want to, and I did, I submitted eight questions. You have to do it through the internet, and they will be used then by Senator Fulmer, is one person there, who will submit these questions and try to get answers to them, and they were eight of them. And I took them directly from the draft. They're not, the document itself, they're not opinion questions, but they're questions about the content of the draft. I did want to tell you that a woman stood up, her last name is Williams, I don't know where she came from, that she wanted everybody to know that in Pennsylvania, we do not give any normed tests. We give all criterion reference tests so that everybody can score high. And if we didn't do that, if we gave norm tests, only a few kids would score high. I couldn't believe she stood up and said that, but she did. Thank you.
Any questions? All right, I'm sure we'll be hearing more of Common Core from you and, and other people here, and certainly our administrators. Okay. Um, let me see, Gail is not...
Right.
Okay, we will move to the superintendent's report.
Well, I have a couple of walk-on items for you this evening. First of all, we would entertain a motion that Bijai Burke be approved as a volunteer volleyball coach.
Hear a motion?
Make a motion.
Ms. Kaufman makes the motion? Second. Second by Ms. Love?
Just a question I missed. Is that high school or middle school, or was that what program?
Just this assistant volleyball coach should be placed at the discretion of the head coach.
Okay.
So walk-on, citizen com, do we, do we need to?
Yes, citizen comments.
Any citizen comment or other, other comment or question? Then I would ask for the roll call, please? Regards to hiring Bijai Burke?
Right, as a volunteer.
Okay, very good. Roll call, please?
I think next up is Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, and that passes seven, zero, and two.
On the other walk-on, I have Mr. Potonic passed out a resolution to lease rooms to the Westmoreland Community Action Incorporated for 2013-14. This will be a portion of the Roughsdale Elementary School. The other part of the school, as you know, is leased to the intermediate, for the early intervention program. The term of the lease would be August 1, 2013, through July 31, 2014. And that would be at a sum of $21,500 for the year.
Ms. Kaufman makes the motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistel? Comments, questions?
Did it says here that neither party notifies the other before the end of the term, the lease rolls over from year to year? So, um, this is simply a vote, that if we hadn't voted on it, it would continue to be in effect, is that right?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Section C?
Yes.
If neither party notifies the other before the end of the term, the lease and its terms roll over from year to year?
Yes, I put that in the lease. And then, unfortunately, there are some years when we want to change the amount of rent. There've been some instances in which the range changed. At one point, one of the entities wanted to have a separate lease for that year regardless. And one time, we had an issue with the Department of Education about the timing of sending in the PDE 359 before the lease would be signed. So even though we could take the position that this is just rolling over, I wanted to have this as a backup to be able to have an actual new lease because of the, sometimes the problems with the Department of Education requiring that Form 359, which we did send in for the IU, because we did that in order in advance.
I'm sure everybody else knows, but what's a PE 359?
It's a form in which we both self-certify, that we passed a resolution, and that it's for a defined period of time, and it's for so much money, and it spells out who's responsible for what. And there's other things like that.
Even though we just read it?
Part of it, yeah. And I'm trying to...
It's part of the reduction initiative.
Department of Education, who, you know, maybe we could talk into saying that we don't have to do this every year.
Should we have that in there then? Do you think it's good to keep that in there, that it'll just automatically roll over?
Well, see, the problem is, if we don't tell them that we want to change something, and they don't tell us that we want, they want to change something, because both sides just forget, or both sides just want to go on, and you haven't done anything, then at least you've got a backup. Something in writing to say, hey, it's August 1st, you owe us rent.
But on the other hand, you can't raise it either.
If you give them advance, another you can't.
If you don't, you just use this roll-up clause and it stays the same.
Yes, yes. Nor does it go down.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Sure. Other comments, questions? Citizen comments? Then let us have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, and that passes seven, zero, and two.
Couple other items which require no votes, they're informational. Kindergarten orientation is underway. Our enrollment this year is 141 students. Last year, our enrollment was approximately 161 students, so we're down about 20 students in terms of our kindergarten enrollment from where we were last year. Other buildings are also conducting orientations throughout the days and weeks leading up to, to school for new students. I know the middle school yesterday had students coming in and getting schedules and doing all those kinds of things. So we're gearing up here and getting ready to, ready to begin. In your packet, I'll remind you that I provided you with a schedule of open houses. I believe there are four in one week, and then one in the following week. So we would invite you to attend as many of those as you possibly can.
Excuse me, I was gonna bring us up in citizens' comments, but I'll bring up students' comments. Every year, well, not every year, but every year, there's definitely conflicts with board meetings and open houses. I've missed numerous open houses of my children. I've missed numerous concerts. All school board meetings are set so far in advance. Is that right? The superintendent and the principals can start watching that, so we can attend these?
Yes.
Events, since we have so many good things going on in our district?
Thank you, Mike. We can, we can look at that for next year.
It would be nice if we had a central scheduler for the district. That way, everything would go through one person, and maybe that would simplify matters. I don't know.
Doesn't look like any of these conflict.
Yes, September 12th.
12?
Isn't it? Yes, September twelfth, isn't it?
Without having a calendar in front of me, that would be the second Thursday.
Mike, I think there are meetings in September, I think, twelfth and nineteenth.
Fifth and twelfth, Thursday.
Right.
Correct, twelfth and nineteenth.
Five, twelfth, and nineteenth, a Thursday, so I think the meetings are five and twelve.
They're one of those.
Right.
Plus, like I said, I know other years, I've noticed, like I said, open houses, concerts, various other events.
Sure.
Does this would conflict with anybody for grades four and five? Amy, you have one for five?
Is that you, Jason?
I'm the ninth and tenth, so.
This might be a danger.
Any other comments? I would just, Mr. Benz, I mean, I sympathize with you, but I would hate to see that become the deciding point. I mean, put it in, but any number of us, I mean, that's a part of, a part of being a parent and being a school board member, I suppose.
Or flip it around the other way, make sure the principals don't schedule something when there's a board meeting.
I've actually--
Flip it the other way.
I've actually heard comments from people that the principals schedule that stuff that night so they don't have to come to the board meeting. While that's true, I don't know, but I've heard that.
Oh, my goodness.
Never thought of that, Mike, but--
Okay.
Yeah. All right, but we will try to remedy that in the future. Thank you.
Please consider it.
Now, the last item I have for you, several months ago, Pastor Lee Klein from the Center Bethel Church of God in Alberton asked if he could set up an appointment with Dr. Scott Ma, and we entertained his desire to meet with us. And what he said was, we want to do something for the school. What can we do? How can we support what you're doing? So, we sat and we brainstormed a little bit, and one of the ideas that Tim actually came up with was, we have what we call nurses' boutiques. Sometimes kids need a change of clothes throughout the course of the school day, and sometimes we don't have nice-looking, well-fitting clothing, so we suggested that that congregation might, you know, be involved in kind of helping to stock those boutiques. Well, they took it a step further, and throughout the course of the summer, they purchased and filled fifty backpacks for incoming kindergarten kids whose parents might not otherwise be able to afford school supplies for them. So, I'm just sharing with you the letter that I sent him and publicly acknowledging the work that those folks are doing, just to support the kids, the kids at our school. And we certainly thank them for that. And, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Jack, I have a question. Every year that I've been on the board, we always had this vote on kindergarten orientation dates. I don't know, it was five days, it was four days. We're not voting on it either. What is it? I mean, how did it end up?
It's now three days.
You have it down to three?
Yeah.
I'm just asking, because it used to be five, and four, and three.
We cut it back, we cut it back to three days for kids, cost saving maybe.
Three days, kindergarten orientation.
Thank you, Dr. Molnar, and our solicitor.
On the tax litigation with the two-twenty Besford investors for the tax assessment, we've had a deal with the property with the appraiser, obtained information, and a status conference with the judge. The judge has issued an order determining that September first would be the valuation date for the next tax assessment here, because we've gotten far enough into this year that there will actually be two tax years at issue. And having the judge determine that date, which nobody objected to because it made sense for another reason, the tax code will cut down on the possibility of different sides coming in with different dates on their appraisals. We're going to have an informal meeting just among the attorneys next week, see what the other side wants in the way of assessment, and then I'll report back to you on that. And the judge has set deadlines for doing the, having the appraisals done and exchanged, having settlement conferences in the fall, and then a potential trial date. And I forgot to write down the exact date, but if we needed a trial, it would be in December. So, during the summer here, we've had a fair amount of activity getting to a resolution of this case. And so, I'll have to report.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other board comments, notes? Were you going to make it? Okay, Ms. Feig, go ahead.
I'm sure that everybody here saw this in the newspaper. Greensburg Salem audit uncovers pension spiking, school salaries under investigation. And what happened is, I'm sure you read it, that the retiring administrators manipulated their healthcare payments to spike their pensions. This is my point. When you read these articles, every school board member sits there and says, I didn't look, I know nothing, Sergeant Schultz, I know nothing, I know nothing, I know nothing. And I just want to make it very clear that almost three years ago, I informed at least three members of this board, other than myself, and the whole passports, about a concern that I had about that. I also was the person who made a motion to have an outside independent audit regarding that, and that was shot down. And I believe Levi gave the great speech about how somebody who's been working here for thirty years, audit community audit, is auditing for thirty years, he audits yourself. So, I just, with this, this is not over. This is not over. I want you to know it's not over. And I just want to be on the record that you were notified, you were alerted that this was going on.
And having said that, just to add to what Dr. Feig said, we did read that report, as a matter of fact, rather than using a secondary source. I made copies of the actual audit report for sale for your perusal of the entire report. And certainly, my reasoning for sharing this with you is not to pass dispositions on a neighboring district. There are a lot of findings everywhere, but rather than what you read in the paper, I thought that you should probably have accurate information there. Additionally, I made copies of our state audit report from January of 2011, and you note in the cover letter there, it indicated that we were in compliance with all applicable laws. I called the Auditor General's office today and attempted to get our 2013 audit. It has not been released yet, but at the Exa Conference, we were informed that there was, there were no findings, no observations, but a perfectly clean audit. And one of the things that the state auditors did look at was the situation that Dr. Feig had mentioned. We also, in that regard, in 2011, on May the fifth, we had a special audit of that alleged pension spiking, and it was found that there was nothing like that occurring here. And we also had asked the Pennsylvania State Retirement, Public School Employees Retirement System to investigate and make a rule, and which they did. And again, there was no finding of any irregularity here at Southmoreland in that regard.
Unless the newspaper reporter is lying, he said that the reason the auditors found what they found is they were, quote, "tipped off."
Again, I can't speak to Greensburg Salem, Doc. I know that they're off the road there in Greensburg. I can only speak to what happened in Southmoreland. And the auditors, you know, here did look into that because there was a citizen inquiry made. They did look into it, and they, there was no finding. Everything that was done here was done in accordance with the law.
Well, it's my understanding when you have an audit, it's not your current year. Don't they come back and audit? The last audit thing I attended was, what, 2009 or something like that?
Correct.
So, this could even happen yet. I mean, this is, we're talking about it happening.
What happened here, or what allegedly, what you were suggesting that might have happened here?
It would not have happened yet in 2009.
According to when those questions were made, when those questions were raised, that was 2011, and the 2013 audit covered the year 2011, and things were done correctly.
Then why are they questioning Greensburg Salem?
That's something that I can't respond to.
It's the same thing.
I can't respond to that because I do not know what their situation was or how things were handled. Although I attempt to talk about the inner workings of another district, but certainly not fodder for a Southmoreland school board meeting.
You know, I've talked to a couple of people, and they feel that this is a statewide problem. It's not just, but my point is, I looked at this three years ago, so can't be pontius pilate on this one. I don't know what's going to happen. I don't care what happens, obviously, but the bottom line is, this is the exact same thing I talked about three years ago.
Thank you.
It's okay, it's tax money, who cares?
Thank you.
Pension fund's only forty-one billion dollars in the hole now.
Any other comments? Mr. Benz and Ms. Kaufman, you were around the table when somebody's inquiry was going on several years ago. I try to put you in the spot. I would just say, for the record, myself, I was a part of this for the past three and a half years, and certainly, what Dr. Molnar here is reporting, that our district did due diligence in checking where an inquiry is made. And at this point, I have no evidence whatsoever of any improprieties or any malfeasance on anybody's part of it. Citizen comments? Anything further? Hearing none, I would hear a motion to adjourn by Mr. Beistel. Please hear a second. Second by Ms. Kaufman, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? And the meeting is adjourned.